Thank you, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all back to our meeting. We're, if you're following our agenda, we're on page ten. And we're going to be talking about the ATE contract proposal for two thousand and twenty four. And I'll turn it over to the administration.
Thank you, Chair, and I will turn it over to our Director of United States Protective Services. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Members Committee. This ATE contract proposal originates from a direction given to administration to explore alternative options for automated traffic enforcement or photo radar. This afternoon, I am submitting to committee this report with direct mandate action. The council direct administration bring this report to the November twenty first regular meeting of council to renew the contract for a decision to review the contract for provision of automated traffic enforcement services. Administration attempted to explore a collaborative venture with the town of Edson to provide us with photo radar services, and although they continue to explore delivery models to be used in Edson and perhaps Hampton, they have not concluded exploring their options and are not yet in a position to enter into any arrangement with the town of Hampton. In August, an RFP was advertised for ATE in Hampton, and we received one proposal from Global Traffic Group, our current provider. On October twenty fifth of this year, the Peace Officer and Security Program's Law Enforcement and Oversight Branch from the Alberta Sageys and Emergency Services conducted an audit of our ATE program, which also occurred in every Alberta community that has photo enforcement. The results of that audit have not yet been returned to us as of this date. They did indicate that if there were anything out of the ordinary that stood out that needed addressing, we would be notified right away. Attached are the two thousand twenty-three monthly stats for ATE. Since writing this report, I have since received the September stats as well, which I can share. Attached also is the ATE proceeds and community grants policy for information, which is also the subject of the next action in for committees. With that, I please to answer any questions to the council.
Thank you very much for your contribution, Congressman McGee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For administration, my question is, if it's the will of committee and then council to renew this contract, does that put us in a new position in terms of negotiation to try and strengthen our position in terms of determining for predetermined times, more time spent in zones like school, school zones, as an example? And, and sorry, following up on that, then holding the contractor to any kind of account if they fail to meet that obligation?
Through the chair to committee, the simple answer to that is yes, that could be negotiated into a new contract. Thank you.
Counselor Stausch.
Just a clarifying question, then, and follow up, council on reviewing that. Is negotiating those conditions compliant with the RFP that was proposed?
Through the chair to committee, yes, it is. That was stipulated as part of the RFP that we would commence negotiations with the success of proponent.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Congressman McGee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so I'll speak a little bluntly, I suppose. If, if the question is right now today to carry on with our existing contract and sort of the terms and conditions, I, I wouldn't be in favor of it. My longstanding concern with our past contract has been that not enough time has been spent in areas, especially school zones. I think that's the one where really there's, there's not a lot of debate to benefit, provide safety for kids, providing, of course, the truck aside and you know motorists can see that in effect it's a photo enforced zone, brings people speeds down, good for kids, good for families to win. Unfortunately, what we found in the past is that requests on our part to switch and spend more time in those zones, it's been met with. I think resistance is a fair thing to say without going too deep into it. If there's an opportunity to actually have some meaningful conversations about determining time spent in zones, then I'd be in favor of moving forward with something like this, especially over simply a year basis. However, if the vendor has no interest in sort of pursuing that, well, then I guess it speaks for itself. So it's one of those things where I find it really hard as a community and as a town to say we would like something and for the vendor to basically be able to dictate to us what they want instead. And for us to sort of forcibly go along with that, I have no interest in that kind of contract or positioning for the town, none. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. Counselor Taylor?
Hmm, no, I do.
You do? Okay, good.
My, my opinion on photo radar has kind of changed since I voted to extend the contract before. In part because of what's happening at Macarthur, the Booker Corner, and in part because of information that's in this report. And I think that we need enforcement measures that are effective and fair when it comes to traffic safety. And what we're getting with this program is eighty percent of our tickets are on the edge of town. In some cases, in old historic speed fishing holes that the RCMP used to go to. And we're getting drivers that are going marginally over the speed limit at ten to fifteen kilometers per hour. Rather than tra- targeting problem drivers and hazardous areas, that's you know, I think we need the police pulling over distracted, dangerous drivers and then finding high-risk locations and behaviors. A lot of the photo radars that we have, and this is being confirmed by both the SAV sergeant and by Global themselves, a lot of the photo radars that we have are massive. They run for kilometers or more. Macarthur and Switzer and Pembina are two examples. In other words, we're not targeting specific problem areas. We just got broad areas of roads that we're putting photo radar on. That's not conducive towards a good safety program. And I guess the data that's presented in these reports is trying to say to us that photo radars are any collisions, but I don't see any correlations here with the data that's provided between photo radar and traffic safety. And kind of makes sense. Why would a partially hidden vehicle have any effect on drivers in the zones we're talking about? So the information that's provided here is a very short window. It's from after COVID. And so I'm not sure it tells much of a tale. I, I assume this is kind of a question here. I assume the administration is aware of the Sherwood Park study, which is being written up as a master's project by the University of Victoria in two thousand and seventeen, and that study showed that there was no statistical evidence between the presence and the absence of photo radar and the frequency of collisions. And they used years' worth of data, regression analysis, probability testing. Are you able to provide any studies or any hard evidence that says that that traffic study is incorrect?
Through the chair, if I could. Done a preliminary look at that document. But I just want to be clear on what what that study said. The review of the studies that have been done on photo radar have in fact concluded that they do reduce traffic collisions related to road injuries and deaths. What the study does point out is that none of the studies that have been conducted on photo radar incorporate any of the, or they're not good studies that control a number of different other variety or other conditions that might be present when it comes to the cause of these collisions. So correlation doesn't necessarily equal causation. Whether is the biggest proponent for it, even the Sherwood Park study, it did, it did it did come to the conclusion that looking at it on the surface, when they eliminated photo radar, it did increase the number of collisions and did increase the number of injuries related to collisions. But when you look at other, some controllables, they looked very preliminary at adjusting that data for population. They found that that inverted the findings. So when you adjust for population, that it actually, when they reduce photo radar, it actually reduce the amount of collisions when you look on it on a per capita basis. So so the studies are fairly consistent that photo radar does reduce it. But no study, at least according to the document reference, actually has looked at any of the other metrics that might be involved in collisions in them. And that might be the engineering of the roadways, that's weather conditions. That's the trap, other traffic calling measures. There's a number of different varieties. But the simple answer is there's no really good scientific data out here to support the notion that photo radar does. Photo radar reduces the amount of collisions for, for municipalities.
Exactly. The Sherwood Park study also indicates that there is a minor negative correlation between ATE and traffic safety, meaning that it actually increases traffic accidents, although the effect is negligible enough that other factors come into play. So we're not getting what we, I don't think we're getting what we think we're getting with this particular program. If you think you're getting a traffic safety program, I don't think you're getting that. I think you're getting a revenue generating program that's attracting, that's attracting tickets from drivers that are going marginally over the speed limit that are causing safety problems to begin with. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor? And Congressman McGee?
Uh, I really, in order to be productive, I need some guidance from administration. I would love, love to put forward a recommendation tonight, but I need to make sure that it, it captures a few things. I'd need to make sure that it captures that any new contract would capture a significant increase of time spent in school zones and pedestrian zones. That additionally, that the, the vehicle in question is obviously continues to be or increases the visibility and also is not hidden, because that was an area of essentially fight in the past where we had engaged in a conversation with our past operator and said, no, we don't want these vehicles hidden. That was communicated, and then that continued to happen. And we were essentially told that, well, no, we don't really have much control over that. So again, I would love to support that, but how would administration like that to be framed in a potential consensus from council? Does administration need that framed from council, or is that something administration would seek as part of a, a new one-year contract?
Through the chair and members of council. If there's specific changes to the program, I would ask that that be captured as a part of the consensus. If there's, for example, increase, increase enforcement in school zones, if that is going to be a change, we would certainly want to look at that as possibly a benchmark when looking at our contract with, with Global. When it comes to visibility, I would request some further direction. I know there are neon signs related to the neon signs related to the, where that vehicle is located, and they typically put it out. If we're talking about wrapped vehicles or anything else, that would have to be negotiated in. But as of right now, there are, there are signs in compliance with the legislation for traffic enforcement.
Yeah, then, you know what? In order to, to be constructive, I'll try and put something together, and then if administration or council has any concerns, please let me know. So Jen, I'll utilize the first part, or sorry, I'll use in whole. Oh, no, I can't, sorry, because that's that committee seek consensus to bring to a regular meeting of council. A request to renew and update the contract for the provisions of automated traffic enforcement services. With global traffic for a one-year period giving special consideration to the following, and then I'll give you a list. Let's see here, significant increases time spent in school and pedestrian zones. A new line, please. Highly visible enforcement vehicles. And then if, new line. No attempt made to hide enforcement vehicles. I think that essentially covers almost a decade's worth of concerns. Forgive my sauciness. Get your phone on it. Um, I'll add one more. Significant reductions in time spent at the edges of town. And if, if I can speak to that, Madam Chair. And again, I, I really am, I'm trying to be constructive. This really does summarize almost a decade worth of frustrations with this program. I'm, I don't, I don't believe the same extent as my colleague. I do believe that traffic enforcement programs that they can be very beneficial to safety, but I think there's a couple of key elements. They have to be visible. If I see a photo radar truck or I see signage saying in areas is being enforced, I'm going to slow down. That has to be in an area where it's going to benefit the citizen. Now, that being said, I, I would disagree. I think anytime you start speeding up over the recommended speed limit, you're actually increasing the percentile chance of a fatality or a serious injury. Time that I spent on the, the fire department, it proves that to me. People who were going fast, they get hurt. But that being said, there's ways we can fix this program and still carry on. So I think we have the duty to try and do that, not just bellyache about it. So thanks for entertaining my sauciness, but this would go a long way to making the program better. And I think a year, a year of practice, or pardon me, a year trial would actually be a good way to see if we can get any bang for our buck with those changes, or if there's no interest by this vendor to pursue it. There we go.
Thank you, sir, very much. And Counselor Taylor.
I appreciate what you're doing. I'm not going to vote for it. But the reason why I appreciate what you're doing is because only ten percent of the time spent in April and May that we've been given, where the schools are actually in, is spent in school zones. It doesn't apply to July and August, obviously. And throughout the other reports, over fifty percent of the time is spent on the edges of town getting those speeders that are just marginally going over the speed limit that aren't a problem to begin with. So that, if you believe that photo radar is actually a tool that can affect traffic safety, then those will help gear to the problem more, gear the traffic enforcement more to the center of town. So that's, I think, a better step than what we have right now. Not one that I'll vote for, but a better step forward.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Stausch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to ask a question really quick, and then I'll get back in queue. My really quick question is if this passes or if it doesn't pass, or whatever the outcome is, is it administrations intend to continue exploring options to potentially partner with that center other communities on having an in-house automated traffic enforcement program?
Well, head sir.
Through the chair to members of the council, that would be a direction that I would love to seek from council is as to whether we're still interested in you know, it could be that we're not interested in outsourcing this particular service, and we're still interested in looking at bringing it in-house. But that would be a direction that we would seek from council if we were to continue to look at those options.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good for now.
Thank you, sir. Counselor McGee.
Just looking to try and seek support any which way I can. If that was a motion that followed up on this, I would certainly reform to support it.
Should this one get defeated?
No, supported.
I do have a question. For a minute. In-house would be quite expensive. To tackle this ourselves.
Through the chair, the option is, Mr. DeBodra was indicating to us, we've been having discussions with the town of Edson. I do, I, I think that offering photo radar in-house with one community, I think that would be difficult to provide. I think that the, the economics become a little bit more attractive if you could partner with with a neighboring municipality. So we've been talking about that with the town of Edson now with the key staff turnover with the forest fires this year. This became a less of a priority and, but in conversations, we do believe that with, at this time next year, we will have this sorted out with the town of Edson. Unless there's a desire from council to, to direct us to go at it alone, our, our, our current direction has been to work with the town of Edson.
Thank you very much. And, uh, our chief.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a little bit more information with reference to Councilman McGee's comments about the school zones. In September, I gave direction to go to increase the patrols in the school zones. Of course, they're only operating during the school year currently. Twenty percent in September alone, twenty percent of their time was spent in school zones doing enforcement, and there were zero infractions, speed infractions in that time period in that month. So the time spent in school zones is not productive revenue-wise. But it is time spent in zones that are identified as a potential hazard zones. And so they did increase that. They, they humored me. With the proposed change to the traffic bylaw, if you recall, that, that comes to council next week for second reading, there is a proposed change to the school zones and playground zones, which would make them enforceable year-round. And for longer periods of time. So that would come into play and would actually change our statistical spec- from any service provider.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Stausch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be scoring it. It was more, I think it addresses a lot of the trends that I've seen come forward too. And just going through the data, I didn't amalgamate it and come up with any totals or anything, but it's pretty apparent that in a, in a, in a revenue reward-based system, given a free hand, the contractor will choose a location that is most productive for them. So they chose leaving town on both ends. And some, and some months, according to the data, that's the only place they went is westbound by the mall or eastbound by Macarthur. Because, I mean, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out when it, you have an apparent open road in front of you and you're out of town, you're leaving town. And that's where they, that's, that's where their biggest reward comes from. So that's where they spend most of their time. I mean, this addresses that. Well, that's why I support it. The other reason I'm supporting it is I, I feel photo radar does, photo radar and automated traffic enforcement, it does have a place in ensuring compliance both through the use of visible vehicles, but just in the event of having it in self, itself. The provincial government recognized that there were some issues with automated traffic enforcement in two thousand and eighteen, I believe it was, in that some municipalities were using it as revenue generation streams, which was not the intent of the province when they said automated traffic enforcement would be allowed. They did their own study, found out, okay, we need to curb that. They made changes to the system. But during process that study, they found out that automated traffic enforcement actually is responsible for in Alberta specifically over a ten-year period, it was a one-point-four reduction in traffic collision rates and five-point-three reduction, five-point-three percent reduction in the proportion of fatal collisions. And they directly attributed that to photo radar, not other mechanisms and not other influences. That's from the Alberta Report from two thousand and eighteen, that photo radar itself was responsible for those reductions. So I feel there's a place for it, like a lot of guidelines, laws, rules. One of the challenges is enforcing them. There never seems to be enough people to enforce the rules, the laws and the regulations that are out there. I'm not saying that AT should be the only tool, but I think it is a tool and it can be an effective tool in conjunction with peace officers and RCMP conducting the same types of activities. So I'll support this for, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stausch. So counsel, any more conversation on this before I call a question? Yes, sir, go ahead.
I can only say I won't support it. I don't think photo radar is a, a safety tool. I haven't been provided any hard evidence that it is a study or anything.
Thank you, sir.
Five minutes of Google research doesn't convince me.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
I said I need a, I need a study or something fairly convincing, not just a
Yeah, thank you. And Counselor McGee.
I guess, and I'm really not trying to be facetious. I guess my question to Counselor Taylor is this. If you see a posted speed enforcement vehicle that says photo radar and you're going five or ten over, my question would be, do you slow down? And if the answer is yes, you do, I would agree with you because I know I should do. And I think that results in a net safety increase. I know I don't speed up when I see a photo enforcement truck. So I think the answer is, yeah, it does have a net effect. Even if minimal, it certainly doesn't increase it, the, the danger. So I guess that's, that's why I take the position I
Yes, do you want to respond?
Absolutely. I think that's a good question, and I think that's the negative correlation that we're finding in the Sherwood Park study, that photo radar actually can cause more accidents. And that's because one of the things that could be occurring that we don't know about, because we're just looking at this fairly superficial level unless you do a good study. And that's that, yeah, you slow down for the two hundred meters that you have to slow down, and then you garner, and that maybe could be when the accidents are occurring. That could be what's causing the negative correlation that they're talking about. But it only slows you down for a short period of time when you know that there is a particular area. The overall effect that that has on traffic safety, I think, is debatable.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Stausch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just in reference to Counselor Taylor's comment about a five-minute Google review, it's more in-depth than that. It's a, it's the Automated Traffic Enforcement Program Review that was, that was solicited by Alberta Transportation in two thousand and eighteen. It was conducted by MMP LLP. It's available online. You can read it. That's where the data comes from. It's not a Google search where somebody somewhere decided to say, yeah, it reduces it. It's, it's part of that report. So that's where it came from. It's in, it's on a five-minute Google search where I found somebody who said that, yeah, it does. It's, it's, oh, anyway, that's, that's, thank you.
And Counselor Taylor.
Yeah. That's the sort of information I would need to provide it in a professional report when I consider questions like this, so I could read the report in detail and understand the context and the full implications of it. Difficult to consider, but it hasn't been provided in advance, right?
Thank you, sir. So I have a question for Ben before I, I vote. What other options have we looked at? Admin and fire to slow people down. You know, especially in these areas where we're seeing high tensions.
To the chair, to all of committee, we've looked at conventional enforcement, uh, by the RCMP and peace officers, so they're pulling people over. Uh, we can't be everywhere all the time. We do have a limited number of, uh, RCMP members that are available on a daily basis. Uh, we only have two peace officers. They, they do controls every day, uh, both our C and P and our peace officers. Uh, they can't be at every school zone in town. We have six. Out at the same time, because there's a limited number to deal with. Um, but for the most part, we've looked at conventional. We've also, uh. Looked at the technology that can be used through automated traffic enforcement. Which would just be like you see in other communities that can't on the post. But because of the moratorium that Alberta, uh, the Solicitor General Office has, we can't introduce new technology. Into, uh, into our program at this time until they completed the review. And the, that review will not be, we did again, it's been put off by a year. Uh, so. The end of this December. So they, I, I do believe that the results of the audit will be a little more telling. Uh, because they've audited every community. They've also audited every service provider. So. I have a forum meeting with Global tomorrow, uh, to discuss the, some of the audit findings.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So council, we do have a, um, a consensus request. And if there is nothing else, I will vote. The committee see consensus to bring to a regular, um, a regular meeting of council. Our request to renew and update their contracts with a provision of automated traffic enforcement with global traffic. For a one-year period, giving special consideration to the following. Significant increases in time spent in schools and pedestrian zones. Highly visible enforcement vehicles. No attempt made to hide enforcement vehicle. And significant reductions in time spent at the edges of town. For council, if you're able to, uh, vote, council, no. So that vote is carried a three to one with, um, Counselor Taylor voting against. Thank you. So, yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes, please.
Uh, I'd like to seek consensus of committee to direct administration. To. Continue to. Explore. Uh, in-house manage. A T E program. On a potentially. In partnership. With neighboring communities. With the report, sorry, no, two quick reports. Brought to. A future committee of the whole meeting. For. Number thirty, uh, twenty twenty four. So I'm gonna ask administration a question if I can and then speak to it. So to administration, then is September twenty four or, and before the end of September. Twenty twenty four reasonable timeline to have that brought back. And the reason I put that in there just for some frame of reference is it would give us time. Next fall to weigh that option against another one-year renewal. Of, uh, of a, of a contract with global providing that it passes it. Uh, at council, if it gets renewed, this would give us the option of a potential additional renewal per year. Or potentially switching program to be in house.
Through the chair, to members of council, yes, that would be, that was our intended timeline. I think September does give us. That chance or that opportunity to flush out all of our options level at that time. So, uh, I think that's important.
So this is a direction that I'd like to see administration taking to have it come back to council. I think if we've got. A program that's, that's running in-house and it isn't revenue maximization driven. It can be controlled a lot more effectively in that, uh, some of those concerns that were brought up earlier about having AT. Put in problem areas, make sure that they're doing schools on enforcement. Areas that actually would benefit from having enforcement applied would be the areas that would focus, would be focused on. Not the revenue, not the areas that generate most revenue. I think by partnering with some of our neighbor communities and I left that pretty vague, it could be Edson, could be White Court, could be both, could be whatever, whatever works. Because I realize the challenges of just hint and having a full-time A T E program here. That to me would be too much, but if it's a couple of days a week and you have a couple of days a week, it's a couple of days a week in White Court. That might be the way to go. So I, I'd look forward to, uh, count to maybe supporting that and having that come back for a future consideration. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, sir. So we do have a consensus request, um, council. Anyone else here to speak to this? Had nothing and I will call. The committee see consensus to direct administration to continue to explore in-house. Managed A T E program potentially in partnership with neighboring communities. With the report brought to a future committee of the whole meeting before September thirtieth. Twenty twenty four and council, if you could vote now, please. And that is carried three to one with the Counselor Taylor, uh, voting against. So council, is there anything else on, on the A T P contract? Anything else you want to discuss? And nothing, we're going to move on to, and this will be on page twenty-three of our, um, agenda. This is, uh, five point three, the A T E proceeds for twenty twenty four. Community grants and I'll turn this over to you, Ben.
Thank you, Chairman, as a council. So this is before you, this is getting back to our budget discussions. When we're going through the budget, when it came to our community grant, we. We hit a little bit of a snag whether we apply with policy and put that forward. Uh, or bring this forward with the council or, uh. A decision that may not necessarily be in compliance with policy, but for, for good reason. So, wh- when we look at the. The A T E proceeds policy seventy-eight, we. What it dictates is that it allocates a percentage of the A T E proceeds to the community grant program for thirty percent. Safety initiatives, reserve fund at ten and the, um, it, a divine. Defined reserve fund for both of those programs at sixty percent and it also allocates a maximum to those accounts as well. According to the policy, we are to go off of, uh, last year's net revenue, uh, for the program. So last year, we. Uh, we figured it could either be twenty twenty-two is last year from where we are now. Uh, it could be twenty twenty-three is last, the last year for the budget. Um, but because we've had it. Or of a intermittent, uh, A T E program, there's not a really good year to base it off of. You know, as, as an example, twenty twenty-two, we know made eighty-nine thousand in revenue. Twenty twenty-one, we made forty-one and in twenty twenty, we made one hundred twenty-five. Uh, this year currently sitting at our actual net revenue, we are only sitting at. Uh, twenty-three thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars. So, um. Thirty percent of those event, uh, historically much lower for that community grants budget. Um, so we were, so I'm looking for council's direction on what we want to do. We have created a few options for council to consider, uh, I like to allow some to come out of that defined reserve fund, which is for this purpose. Uh, last year that was slated to be sixty thousand dollars, base it off of thirty percent of the. Twenty twenty-three projected revenue, which we have projected to be at ten thousand five hundred. And revisit for midterm budget adjustments. Or base the budget off the last full year of twenty twenty-two at twenty-six thousand. So, um. The one thing that I'll, I'll mention is the twenty twenty-three is, is difficult because these things tend to be very much the rate. Um, we do not have as much revenue or cash from this program as, uh. I think might be understood from the community as of right now, we only have eighty-nine thousand dollars in that reserve fund. A lot of the revenue that has been talked about, I believe in the past, has actually been the receivables of the program and that I've. I was pretty specific to only include what we actually have in terms of cash in that reserve. Fund because a lot of it is set up as receivables. I'm confident that at some point in time, those receivables will be realized, but. It's not something that anyone can promise at this point. So with eighty-nine thousand dollar cash. Uh, my recommendation for council, uh, would be to simply dedicate a. Um, a number that council would be comfortable with to go forward for the twenty twenty-four budget out of that reserve account.
Thank you, administration. Council, what questions do we have of admin? Counselor Taylor.
What's sort of our, uh, running average that we spend on this program for like the last, uh, number years? Sixty thousand was last year, but what about the last two or three years? I guess that covers a pandemic.
Yeah, through the chair, I'm not sure what we spent in twenty twenty, uh, two and prior, um.
I just pulling it out, sorry, the chair, pulling it up.
Through the chair, I know I just, uh, at least anecdotally, this has been, uh. Uh, we have spent significantly more than the sixty thousand dollars for the community grants program in the past, but, uh, we'll, we'll get you. We'll get a counselor there. More accurate answer.
Through the chair, this is actual, um, in the five-year average. For this program is sixty thousand six hundred and ninety-four. The actual outlay in twenty twenty-one was fifty-one thousand three forty-eight. The actual in twenty-two is thirty-three thousand four oh seven. The actual in twenty twenty-three, thirty-four thousand six sixty-eight. And there's still the fall. I'm not sure where they're at for payment of the fall amounts in twenty twenty-three. But there was sixty thousand dollars budgeted in twenty twenty-three.
Um, so the, uh, for twenty twenty-three, you've not factored in the fall. Yeah. Sitting at thirty-four for the spring intake. Mister, uh, to clarify, thank you, Chair, through the rest, uh, the rest committee. The total amount is just shy of sixty thousand for twenty twenty-three in terms of council's resolution. And CEO.
Through the chair, just one other piece of information. Uh, one of the groups being a wild mountain music festival, we did pay for other this account last year. Uh, that did come out of the sixty thousand dollars that was allocated, just so council's aware. So sixty thousand dollars, that would be sixty-five hundred that. Um, additional, I won't go to, uh, the wild mountain music festival if we do decide on that amount. Or we could certainly reduce it by, by that and have the same allowance available to the other groups. But just a piece of information about accounts should be aware of.
Thank you, sir. And Counselor Stauschek.
Uh, thank you, Counselor. You said we have a question regarding. The option to, again, up to twenty-six thousand seven hundred and five dollars. I just need clarification. Is that the? All amount that was collected in twenty twenty-two? Or is that thirty, one of the full amount that is collected in, in twenty twenty? So in other words, is that compliant with the policy? Or, or is that the full amount?
Through the chair, the twenty-six thousand was thirty percent of the net ready.
And Counselor Taylor.
Uh, yeah, I could put them on. That, uh. Um, council provide consensus to include forty-five thousand dollars in the community grant budget for the upcoming two thousand twenty-four. Budget discussion. Forty-five is the three-year running hour, is the three-year average from the numbers that we were just given. So. This is not a good year to be upping amounts for various things.
Okay, thank you. So. Alright, so we do have a consensus request, Counselor Stauschek.
Thank you, Counselor Race. Uh, but we agree with Counselor Taylor that, um. We shouldn't be upping the amounts, um, all for forty-five thousand dollars either. That's, um, not sustainable. The policy dictates thirty percent of what's collected, which if you use the twenty twenty-two numbers. Is just under twenty-seven thousand. If you use the twenty twenty-three numbers, it's just, well, it's ten thousand five hundred. That's my preference, one of those two, because otherwise we're drawing down the reserve. To use for community grant funding, I'd rather. I should clarify that. Can I ask administration then where? If a balance sits above what is in the policy is approved by council, where is the? Where's the offsetting amount come from? Does it come from the reserve?
Madam Chair, yes, it comes from the reserve.
Okay, so if I could continue then?
Yes.
So, yeah, with that assurance that my assumption is correct, I don't want to see the reserve being drawn down. For community grant fund when the intent of that reserve was to pay for safety initiatives. I'd rather we stick to the policy and that the policy says thirty percent of the revenue and it is what it is. Revenues are down, the amount available, available for community grant fund is down. And it sucks, but it's the unfortunate reality. I'll support forty-five, but I'd certainly willing to take a look at a different amount.
Thank you, sir. And Counselor Reguun.
Yeah, I, I fully agree with Counselor Stauschek. Um, and I think the other thing too is that this is an instance of. At least what I perceive, uh, an issue for the public to be aware of. So you can't have your cake and eat it too. You know, if you're going to have reduced photo enforcement. Or you're potentially going to go down a road where you're not collecting as much in terms of revenues. It means that that grant program doesn't receive as much in revenues and there's not as much to go to the community. So, you know, when Counselor Taylor identified, you know, this is not a revenue generator, that's important for people to understand. Is that that then means that there's not as much money to go on those coffers to go to a community or grant programs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So council, we do have a consensus request. Is there any more conversation on this? Yes, sir.
I support Counselor Stauschek's remarks. I'll be voting against my motion. Thank you.
And you certainly, certainly have. Favor of it and you can vote against it. So I will, um, follow question. So I will um call question.
That without any embarrassment at all.
The committee provides consensus to include forty-five thousand in the community grants budget. For the upcoming twenty twenty-four budget discussion, please vote council. And that motion was defeated. Thank you very much. And Counselor.
Uh, thank you. Sorry, 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 I haven't been. Chair, thank you. Uh, I'd like to move the committee provide consensus to include twenty-six thousand seven hundred and five dollars for the community grants budget. The upcoming twenty twenty-four budget discussion. And I can speak to it.
Yes, sir.
For me, that's the most responsible option at this point, the twenty twenty-two numbers are complete and accurate. And I think we can be fairly confident that the twenty-six thousand seven hundred and five. Dollar value is representative of thirty percent of the revenue that was generated in twenty twenty-two. And I think by keeping it. Year behind, I guess, when we approve this. If that if that trend continues, and so the twenty twenty-three numbers are used for twenty twenty-five and so on moving forward. Then we can be more confident that the numbers that we have that we're considering for the amount to uh commit to the community grant fund. Is accurate and available through the approved source and is compliant with the policy. So that's why I landed on number two. And I feel in terms of sustainability and compliance, it's the best option.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Council, does council, anyone else want to speak to this? So I will call the first team. The committee provide consensus to include twenty-six thousand seven hundred and five dollars. For the community grants budget for the upcoming twenty twenty-four budget discussion, and council, please vote no. And that is carried, thank you very much, sir. Now, uh, is there any more discussion on this um five-point three? Nothing from council, we're gonna move on to um. Uh, five point four, and then it's change twenty-seven in your agenda, and that's the Athabasca Avenue Business District. He's been brought brought a lot of traffic safety improvements. And this goes to administration.
Hmm.
Uh, thank you, Chair, I will turn this one over to Mr. McLaughlin. Hey, good evening, council. Uh, so tonight I'm presenting uh some engineering uh design drawings that we would like to uh go for consultation with. Um, in this year's budget, we uh had to do some uh. Changes to the Athabasca Avenue Valley this Valley Business District parking area. And as we started to look at what we were planning, we decided to uh s- study it and come up with a long-term plan. As well as some short-term plans to address the issues. Uh, we have met with the business uh community as we put this together. But now that they we actually have some drawings, we would like to uh take them to the community and get their input. Uh, and the whole pub- public's input as well. Uh, as I uh put together this, I do wanna point out one typo, the financial implications where it says fifty-four thousand from reserves. You're a complete typo, there's uh that's from a template and we're putting it together. Uh, so that shouldn't be it. But we have ninety-five thousand dollars budgeted, you've spent some on engineering. What we want to uh get council's input on the designs that are being uh put forward, then. I'll make questions.
Well, I take you, sir, just have one question, sir, you're saying the financial implications at fifty-four thousand should not be there?
Yeah, that's a complete typo, I'll get there.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Where is the?
Five point three, um, five.
Yes. Page twenty-eight of the P D, oh, there it is, I see, okay, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Maduun?
Yeah, just a clarification, I didn't see, well, I don't think I saw it in the report, and I didn't see it in the diagrams. Um, but as a business owner slash citizen had asked me. Does this plan incorporate any attempts to build uh like a a meridian dividing? Parts of the parking lot, and and I'll preface it. They they thought they heard that, they weren't supportive of that, because the one thing that the signage up on the. Uh, the highway has done, especially over the last year, was bring increased trailer and bus traffic down into the valley. That was seen as is very much a good thing, because that hasn't been happening in the past. I told them I didn't think I'd see that, so I'm just looking for clarification.
Through through the chair, to all the committee, uh, yes, there was an iteration that loo- looked at that. Uh, we toned it down from that, both for cost and because we heard that concern as well. Uh, no, that's that's good, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, and Counselor Taylor.
I'm confused of what you're asking for, you're asking for me to comment on a plan that you that all I need to comment on is that you're gonna go for a consultation. Further consultation with the business owners.
Yes.
That's all.
Uh.
So why would I comment on something till you've gone for them, for consultation?
Through the chair to the rest of the committee, so uh to me it was a bit of a chicken and the egg thing. Do I go go up to the public and then bring it to council and then have council get a bunch of questions, say, well, we don't know what they're talking about? Or do I bring it to council first and then go to the public? So I chose bring it to council first, here it is, if you have any comments, I'd like I'd like to hear them. If you have no comments, I'll bring you back the public's comments, and we'll have a chance to comment then as well.
Do you wanna do a follow-up, sir? Or new question?
Yeah, no, my comment is that uh you gotta start with something, so this is as good a starting point as any. But um I have another question related to who you're gonna be talking to down there, but I'll wait.
Hey, Counselor Maduun?
Yeah, just then really just a few follow-up points, uh, the individual I spoke to, they had asked about speed bumps, but then I had. Explained the part of the report where there was concern over snow plowing, how that might impact the logistics of that. And right away, they were like, yep, that makes sense to me, no problem at all. And then really, the only other consideration they had was that um. When it comes to the uh interaction with business owners, like the follow-up communication. That it it doesn't just rely on the meetings of the Valley Business. Uh, Owners Association down there, just because not all of the business owners get a chance to participate in those meetings. So that the their hope was that it would be a broader blush at communicating with the business owners in the valley, and I thought that was a reasonable request. And that's it.
Okay, uh, through the chair to all the committee, so it was my intent to uh work with that business uh. Community group that that you referenced, but in addition to that was, we've actually put it put it out through all the towns. Uh, social media and communications and put it out to the the general public as well and and get comments from everywhere. So if any business owner feels that they wanna talk to us directly, come and reach out to us, we'd be happy to talk to them.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Taylor.
I think I think you have to do more than that, you have to actually, I agree with the, I heard what um Counselor Maduun said. I think uh you have to like uh take a letter and a plan and actually give it to each uh business person. Because some of those people might not like certain elements of this, but they can't show up to the business association, they might not be tuned in to our social media sites. So I don't know why we couldn't just, and because some of those businesses, they might rely on uh. Like you were saying, uh, the trailer traffic going down, and if we change the parking angle, maybe that affects trailer traffic, and they might wanna say it something like that.
Through the chair to all committee, we can certainly do that, our our staff does does door knockers every time we have a water break, so they're well versed in doing that, that I can give them a package to deliver.
Well, then, nobody can say that they weren't consulted over the safety plan for the area that's gonna affect their business, right?
You bet.
Thanks.
And thank you, sir, and Counselor Maduun.
Uh, just thanks, thanks for following up with the business owners and the Business Owners Association. As a chance to have some meaningful input on what the future of that area looks like, I think that's awesome. So thanks for that, I think it's productive and it shows, you know, putting our heads together what we can do.
Thanks.
I just wanna remind council that we do not have anything before us, then go ahead, sir.
Uh, then I will go with the recommended action. Uh, that committee seeks consensus for administration to proceed with consultation for the traffic safety improvements. To the Athabasca Business District East and West Parking Lot, and I just go into it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And council, do you have any uh consensus for us? Uh, anyone else be helpful, I want to pick it to it, I will call the question then. The committee seek consensus for administration to proceed with consultation. For the traffic safety improvements to the Athabasca Business Traffic or District. East and West Parking Lot, and council, please vote no. And that is carried, thank you very much. And council, anything else on five point four, anything else you wanna bring up, ask? And something? Alright, so we're going to move ahead with our information items. And that's big point one, and that is the pretty senior needs survey. And that's through administration.
Thank you, Chair, I will turn this one to turn this one over to Mr. Richard.
Good evening, council. So this is the report in the front committee to provide the twenty twenty-three senior needs survey results with highlights and high-level analysis. Senior program services and products in the county support healthy aging and enhance the quality of life for an increasingly vulnerable population in Hinton. The information gained through the twenty twenty-three survey can help. Council and administrative engaged program service and project options. Against the needs expressed by Hinton's aging population to better inform evidence-based decision-making for the next few years. The survey, one hundred and nineteen individuals responded to the survey with a ninety-four percent completion rate. In the following highlights, the item numbers correspond to the figure numbers in attachment one in the report. In the general interest section, figure one through five, this data set represents the theme that survey Hinton seniors. Are age sixty-five or older and have lived in Hinton or region for most of their lives. In the housing section shown in figure six or eight. The data set indicates that seniors live in their homes as long as possible, possibly due to a lack of affordable alternatives. And that home support can be an integral part of the choice of the age and place in the community. In the transportation section shown in figure nine through eleven, this data set indicates that almost all of Hinton's. All of Hinton's senior survey respondents can transport themselves. Or access transportation and know there are transit or transportation, public transportation options within the community. And then figures twelve and thirteen in the social and recreation program section, the data set. I showed that the that the community's social and recreation program service level is adequate for the survey seniors. In the medical support section, uh, figures fourteen and fifteen indicate that while most Hinton seniors have a doctor in the county. Increased medical and mental health services um are are welcomed. And then lastly, the the data set, which means figure sixteen through twenty. Uh, shows that Hinton seniors are largely in the low to middle income range. And are experiencing a high cost of living here, but can stay in the community through retirement and are overall happy living in Hinton. This information can be cited as the basis of administrative recommendations on related matters as council works to fulfill its strategic role in this term. There are no implications from accepting this report for information. And with the above, administration asks committee to accept this report on the twenty twenty-three senior needs survey as information. Thank you, and I'm open to answer any questions, committee, we have.
Thank you, Ms. Prashar. Council doing have questions on? That's Counselor Maduun.
Not a question, uh, although, I mean, feel free to comment it, you know, because you conducted the survey. The two that stood out for me the most in terms of what our seniors are are seeing as the most important things. Um, the medical supports, I thought that uh question fifteen was extremely telling. Um, you know, the fact that only forty-nine percent of our our seniors feel like they can access the medical supports that they need. I'd be really interested to see in the since September, since the survey went out, um. That seventy-seven point nine percent of respondents saying they had a family doctor, I wonder how many have actually been impacted since then? Because I know we've lost physicians practicing family medicine since then. Continue us, uh, again, we we know that we're we're hemorrhaging uh medical staff that way. And then the other one was the uh. Question nineteen, uh, basically, you know, a third of our our respondents feeling that they're not financially stable, that's a huge concern for me. So essentially, you know, my big takeaways were, you know, medicine and financial support for our seniors. That was a big thing that I took away from that. I mean, thanks for it, if you wanna, you know, if there's anything additionally you wanted to comment on, please do, it's just the the two things that stood out to me on that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Also, I wanna remind you, we do not have um anything before us. As far as that consensus. And go ahead, Chair.
Just to build on your comments, um. The um. One thing that's striking um with this report as we go ahead with the budget is the uh. Uh, approximate income level for the seniors in this town, so that uh any. Significant tax increase is gonna have a effect on this uh population. So if we could consider that, will we uh vote yes or no to things that are gonna increase the taxes? I'm sure that that would help this vulnerable, but that some of these uh this this group, thanks.
Thank you, sir, and Counselor O'Shawson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to seek consensus that can he accepts this report. And the report on the twenty twenty-three senior needs survey as information.
So, council, any conversation on this? And we believe we're hearing none. Um, I will call the question. Rock Committee accepts the report on the twenty twenty-three senior needs survey as information, and council, please vote no.
Again, no difference.
Okay, and that is carried, thank you very much. Thank you for the conversation, you know, on this area, council, and nothing. Yeah. My goodness, we're up in party already. And I will start with um Counselor Maduun.
Nothing to report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir, and Counselor Taylor.
Nothing.
Counselor.
Report manager.
And China has nothing to report, and we'll move on to the R C A.
Uh, through the chair, to members of council, but the administration report from page fifty-eight to sixty-four is included for. Their information, if there's any questions, would be happy to answer.
And council, any questions on the minute? Nothing? Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to seek consensus to move into closed session.
Thank you, council, any um questions or concerns? Come up. Here in.
Oh, just to point the order, did we wanna finish with the uh pending list with the complete list before we do that?
Have you been offered?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that part, okay.
So if you have any questions?
No, no, that's fine, sorry, I missed that.
Um, so I will call the question, the committee moved into closed session, uh, six, seven, six, three, uh. And that's carried. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.
I was worried I missed something.